Are we gonna turn some time over to Sherri, she has such an announcement to begin our meeting?
Yeah, so I just wanted to make you aware, so next Thursday, there is going to be an open house at six o'clock. That J U B is going to be here to talk about the road project that we're doing. So from fifty-five hundred south to the Davis County line, back in the year twenty twenty, the city applied for some funding to be able to widen that road and they received it. Now it's just UDOT does things at about a five-year in advance plan. So this is when they are going to do it, we have the funding for that now and it'll probably start either this fall or in the spring. But they want to come and explain what they're going to do with the project. So if you kind of look at fifty-five hundred and some might say, you know, why are we even worrying about fifty-five hundred? Because when they start on SR one seventy-seven and they're doing road construction there, that road is going to be very difficult to travel and we are anticipating and planning that the bulk of the traffic then is going to go on fifty-five hundred. Because they'll be able to come up, you know.
Well, which it already is, that's how I came in tonight and it's, it's a train.
It is, it is, so, so we thought, we need to get, um, we need to get on board and start planning. And like I say, if you don't plan five years, so the first phase was actually from forty-two hundred south to the end of fifty-five hundred west. So the next phase that we have funding for is from fifty-five hundred south to Davis County. We already have applied and received that we, that we were awarded funding, but now we're on our way, year's, you know, space to go from fifty-five hundred south to fifty-one hundred south. When they do that along fifty-five hundred west, making sense with my directions?
Yeah.
Then we will do it from, we will apply for funding to go from fifty-one hundred now to forty-two hundred. So all of fifty-five hundred west will be improved with curb gutter and sidewalks.
Will be a two-way road still?
It's, yeah, the road will still be the same, it'll just be improvements on the side.
This is next Wednesday, the twentieth?
So next Thursday, at six o'clock, so instead of a city council work meeting, they will be here to have an open house, it'll be just in the overflow back here with tables that you can ask questions to. It's a, we public noticed it because we have to have a public hearing that night and so we're gonna do the open house and then have a public hearing, so we hope people will come, you know, and answer their questions. But another issue we talked with them about when they met, that we were awarded this new funding from the fifty-five to fifty-one, was we have schoolchildren, that that's within the walking distance. And not only do we not have curb gutters and sidewalks, but we have open drain ditches, which, what they've done so far has been really nice.
So is, is that Hooper City that's doing the improvements on forty-three, that's putting in the curb and gutter and sidewalk?
That is, that's Roy City.
Cause that, cause that neighborhood used to go to Freedom that's in Hooper right there? Cause we've got a friend that lives over there, so they've been complaining about that forever and then they saw the tractor show up, I didn't know if that was us or Roy.
Yeah, Roy received funding to do that, but they're only putting sidewalk on one side of the road. And, and we talked about that, you know, we could have, if we had money to contribute, which we did not, we could have had sidewalk on both sides because it'll be on the east side of the road and the children are going to have a space where they either cross the road, then, cause if they're going to like Rocky Mountain, for example, but that's a Roy project.
Yeah.
Another project we'll be doing here fairly quickly too is fifty-one hundred west from four thousand south to thirty-three hundred south. And that's the other road that we received funding and did a joint endeavor with.
Yeah, that's, cause they put the gravel and stuff down, which worked.
Yeah.
It did okay, but it's.
It'll be better to have sidewalk, but yeah, but they'll probably be starting that in the spring, so the, the schoolchildren are going to have to have another year of walking just on that, that road or mill. You know, one thing, if you do have friends that live in the, in the Higling Meadows subdivision, because a lot of those kids that did the dual immersion program are still going to Freedom Elementary, so we are still going to provide a crossing guard there. Because if not, if, we know there's, kids are still going there and without a crossing guard, they will, well, we just wanna prevent any accidents from happening, so.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's why, you know, I know some people say, why are you doing fifty-five? Well, it's because we're planning and, you know, we're hoping by the time SR one seventy-seven starts construction, we will have all of fifty-five hundred west done, so they can use that road.
Yeah, and we, cause we have no idea what fifty-one's gonna look like with that SR one seventy-seven, do we? I mean, it's, that's where it's going.
That's where it's going.
I drive that all the time and I get to really look at it now, cause it's only thirty miles an hour. And with somebody on my tail, but, ah, but I, it, I don't know what that footprint's gonna look like.
They, they don't know either.
There's no way it can be as wide as what it is in Davis County, cause that's, I mean, there's a thirty-foot median and there's just not the room there.
I went to a transportation.
You're talking about the front of truck?
Well, no, I, I, just, yeah, just both directions, you've got a median that's thirty feet wide plus two lanes each direction. There's no way that it'd fit on fifty-one.
Plus twenty feet before you get to the fence.
Yeah, so I mean, they'd end up having to seal that canal, tear down a bunch of houses.
Well, you can tell how much room UDOT owns if you go over to where the new elementary is.
Really?
And you'll see where the, so the UDOT already has purchased that land, so from where fifty-one hundred is to where the school is, that's how much, how many feet they need.
Is it really gonna run that close to that elementary school?
I'll bet.
Yeah, they ran it just right by that charter school there in.
Off of Hennelo.
Off of Hennelo.
Syracuse Arts Academy.
Yeah, and they don't know yet, but when I was at this meeting, because there is the cement canal, there's Hooper City's, you know, irrigation's water, so there's some talk is maybe they would stay on the west side of fifty-one hundred, because they'll leave probably fifty-one hundred as the friendly road and they'll be able.
I was told their, their plan was they will not touch the Hooper, Hooper canal.
They, yeah, so as I said, maybe west where it's spare and then falls back on the east.
Well, that puts me a little further away from the road then, where I'm on the east side of.
There's still a bunch else of that to buy on the.
Yeah, like, uh, yeah, but they own a ton of property on that road already, right there by the party house.
But most of that's on the east side.
It's on the east side, those, those big empty lots, but.
Yeah, but they don't know yet, other than fifty-one. So anyway, I'll let you get to your main, but just wanted to, you know, if you don't come, if you can, next Thursday.
Next Thursday?
Next Thursday, six o'clock, yes, to the open house, so they can, you know, kind of explain that
That'll be good.
and then stay the public hearing if you want to as well, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um.
There you go.
Other than that, um, the one comment from Amanda on the minutes. Does anybody else have any other comments? I, I also agree, I don't think we discussed changing the limit on the, only on the, like you're outbuilding A U D, not on your internal, I guess that's on the internal.
On the A D Us?
Yeah.
No, we didn't talk about size on interior, internal at all, just external.
Yeah, so that's the only thing, I didn't see anything else that was off there in the minutes either.
On that, no, I'll email you guys, I went through and changed our ordinances for a review by city council to match our discussion, so I'll send it to you guys if there's any feedback, let me know. But hey, this wasn't our intention, it was, we'll discuss it on Thursday, might have the potential, the motion, well, I'm not sure how, Morgan.
Put that city council will discuss it next day?
I'm not sure how it's in their agenda, it might even be a potential motion, but if there's concerns about the way it got drafted from your guys' intent, let me know, I'll let them know, they can table it or anything they need to do.
Okay. And then the oversight structure looked pretty straightforward and the subdivision looks like it's, I mean, they've been at this for a while on that one, but seems like it has.
Do you have, where is the subdivision?
So, out by, what's that other one, Skyview, that a subdivision you're familiar with, um, thirty-eight hundred south, I think, does that ring a bell?
No.
I'll throw it up on the map here for you.
Do you have a presentation or anything you wanna do with that Malcolm there?
Yeah, you can, uh, just give some brief comments on it.
Okay.
Um, it's right here, thirty-eight hundred south. Uh, I don't know, isn't this Skyview Estates or, I don't know, this.
Sure.
Anywho, this is home here, I don't know if you know any of these folks, this house from behind it is Lynette Gilbert. Anywho, just our fourth album, um, so that's the parcel. Yeah, I can give you comments on it. There was a, there were a, we, I don't know if we were in our third or fourth review, either way, I don't think it's a big deal. We didn't do another formal review, but since the public hearing, there were no comments, but he got real worked up, he's like, wait, is this like, this is what I'm gonna build? I'm like, yeah, like, that's why we've been doing reviews for three weeks and, you know, it's just, you know, anyone doing this, they just think, oh, I thought that was just for the sake of the drawing, like, I don't think I want my water line right there and just a few little things and we're like, well, you've gotta show on the plat where you want it, cause that's where it's gonna need to be put. So he changed, he moved the water line, he moved the approach all to the east side of the lot. I had him resubmit to all the entities with the update and they approved it as it is currently and then our engineer did a brief review, cause there wasn't anything huge, just a movement of a couple utilities and our engineer was good with it, I think it was sewer, water and the approach got moved. Um, you can see from your last minutes to this one, they got moved to this side and his home's gonna be located on that side, so.
Okay.
On the east side, other than that, there were no changes from there and it's a really straightforward one, so.
Even with those changes though, I don't think it changed any of the, if you got the approval letters already, right?
Yeah, they're, all the utility companies were good with the move, some of them were either encouraged, I guess his water line was a little close to the sewer, so he moved it. Their sewer was a little close to a water line, so he moved it, sorry. Um, and then, anyway, that's it.
And do you have comments on the oversight structure?
Yeah, I do, that one's, um, the, I wasn't super involved early on, I just reviewed the plan, but they apparently are wanting to get a easement vacated, they have a rear utility easement, they need to vacate it, they want, they have to be, it's a ten-foot easement, they wanna build five foot off property line. So talking with Morgan and Jared when they first submitted it, Morgan brought it to me today, what do we do here, and Morgan and Jared, we just had, Jared walked us through his remembrance of the process, if they can get it vacated, he's gotta get letters from the utility companies.
So is that one that?
That's what, that's what Bryce Wilcox did.
Yes, that's what they're working on, um.
This is the one tonight?
Yeah, the one tonight, so the discussion was, was they can come get a conditional use permit.
Can, pending those letters be submitted?
Pending they get the, the vaca, vaca, the.
Approval. Okay.
One layer on that, I didn't know, this is just news for me, so I just share it so that the planning commission's familiar with it. When I went through today and reviewed it to make sure that I looked everything over, I found a folder for this, we haven't done one since twenty nineteen. I don't know if we've been doing them, but in the past, twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen, we have a folder for years of when people have done this. Technically, there's supposed to be a public hearing, it shouldn't affect your motion, meaning as long as your motion is that they have to go through our process, then we'll make sure they go through the process, I need to do some diligence on my end and understand why we're doing public hearings for it. We also have a fee.
For the easement piece or just for the?
To remove it.
Okay.
We also have a fee and the fee specifically says to have the attorney write up an ordinance removing the easement, which I don't understand, so I emailed Brandon, hopefully, cause he should have done them back in twenty nineteen. We'll get it figured out on our end, as long as you guys are comfortable with it being conditional, we'll make sure the process is followed. I'm, I would imagine, I don't think Hooper just does that, I would imagine it's state law.
To public here, the removal of the easement?
But I don't know, we were doing it in the past, so I don't know why we were doing it, if we, if we don't need to do it.
Well, cause it can, it can impact your neighbors.
Sure.
You know, how come I had to build mine ten feet away, he gets to build his five, he's closer to the fence and then.
Yeah, so I made the applicant aware, it wasn't ideal, I had to call him today and let him know, hey, we didn't, no one knew, how to process these. This is what the process at least logistically looks like and, you know, I'll, I can send them the application after this meeting, but they, in discussions with them, I could tell, like, oh, there's a fee and there's a public hearing, I'm like, yeah, there will be likely, cause that's what we're done. Like, what if we, if we get it conditional, so another condition I would recommend is that, they said if we just move it up past the easement, are we good on the permits, yeah, it all works, and they said, well, might explore that. So I think a conditional use permit could be under the conditions that one, they stay off easement or two, they get it vacated, that's it, pretty simple.
Okay.
Really, it'll just take some work on the backend for them if they go the other route, which we'll make sure and ensure they do the work, so it's done right, it just, we probably should have done it up front or.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that's a lot of steps, he's gotta get letters from utilities.
Yeah.
Letter from the attorney, pay the fee.
Yep, and.
Plus a public hearing, I must, if he goes that way, I almost wonder if we table it and just say, hey, you could jump through three of those hoops before.
Well, but if he comes, cause right now, how, he's within five feet?
He wants to go five foot from the rear, he needs to be ten foot from the rear to stay off of that P U E.
So if he just moves it up, then it's no brainer.
Yeah, if he moves up, it's no problem, it'd be just like anyone we do, if he wants the removal of it, we'll just need to get him through the process and we can handle that, so you guys can.
I guess what's the difference between table, even if we just pass it with the motion, it says you have to, you have to make sure, you work with the city to get this vacated and then the city can put.
That's fair.
I'm gonna bring it up in depth though, so that you guys are all aware, when we do get these, um, make sure, we will make sure, but you guys should all be familiar too, they need to, it needs to be, go through that process I just described. It's not as simple as we supposed.
It's not gonna be a cheap route for him either.
He's just gonna use it for a workshop.
Yeah, it's a pretty basic structure, not really big either, only, only a couple hundred.
I think it's me, I'm moving it up that five feet.
Yeah. There is a, related to my son.
Is there anybody in this town that's not related?
Well, he wasn't, but his, his wife and my daughter-in-law, sisters, they moved, they decided they wanted to be my family and moved from Lehigh up to here.
Alright, I don't think we have anybody else.
What is, we got a minute, so whatever did we come up with on flag lots?
We're still.
I thought you'd sent a deal about Ryan Hill's concerns.
I think that's still one, we were gonna tackle the A D U because that seemed like the lowest hanging fruit and then we were still exploring flag lots and how they.
Yeah, flag lots on Morgan's long-term agenda is actually on your guys' next meeting, uh, to kinda go through, just like we did with the A D Us. I might not be there, I might be out of town that evening, so Morgan might bump it.
Okay.
Unless you guys want it, you can talk to Morgan, but, uh.
I know they're, talking to Ryan, he seemed, he just seemed like there was hard things, but, um, in that thing that Jared, I think, mentioned like a work meeting or something that we can get together and discuss from his standpoints, like the challenges and how we could best approach it and I think that would be constructive to kinda get his feedback into that process early on and saying, but most of all the ordinances that you presented last time, Malcolm, I feel like it was pretty stringent on like making it, so it wasn't like a route to get, yeah, it wasn't a route to get around like subdividing your parcel to get another home on there.
Jared, Jared's biggest concern is, like, from the email you sent and kinda just in gleaning front, is that he doesn't ever want it to be like our intent to develop flag lots.
So riddle me this.
Yeah.
Who owns that one we're doing right now, the flag lot?
Well, he's got frontage, but it does.
I know he does, but who owns the piece right?
That little one, I don't know, who owns this, is, I think it's his as well, no, doesn't.
Trevor Young.
Trevor Young, I don't know, but they both have enough friends, but yeah, this, if this were about, I don't know, fifty foot less, yeah, he wouldn't be able to get it on without a flag lot ordinance, um.
I mean, it just gives the appearance if somebody was to look.
Yeah.
Oh, they proved that, and that was a flag lot.
Yeah, yeah, we get that all the time, like, we've got a couple that are barely a hundred foot and they're real far back and technically it meets ordinance and.
Well, up here on forty-six, or is it, or just down, down right here, there's that big parcel right there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and so it doesn't look, and in looking at it preliminarily, and you guys saw, we went through all the ordinances, it looks like a lot of cities are really open to doing it as long as it's not for, you know, develop, like, trying to develop them that way.
It's for the onesies, twosies.
Better hung up, and so, and a lot of them build out good ordinances for, you know, the fire control, the turnaround, the fires, like, it was like, it was pretty doable, I feel like. Um, I think one suggestion would be, I thought they sounded good in our reading, I thought they looked pretty doable. Everyone has them, that's one sign, I don't need to be, you know, obnoxious, but if everyone has them, West Point, West Haven, Plain City, but, you know, we're the only ones who don't, and.
You know.
I mean, they're, they're doable, I don't, but with that being said, uh, we might, in our schedule, if we do bump it or do them simultaneously, um, we need to discuss our modern income housing plan and those are, they're strategies that the state mandated, so I inherited your guys' like three-year-old plan, we just submitted it. It's in, it was a stretch, to be frank, I think some of them are getting ripe, meaning we've done all we're gonna do with them. Now we either need to change them or I think we'll probably risk failing soon, cause we'll be kinda just talking about the same stuff we've been doing for three years. So I think, and I don't wanna like try and game the system, but I think a low-hanging fruit, if we could find a strategy that related to flag lots and we're already gonna do it anyway, might as well identify that as a strategy, implement flag lots and then, and then report on it for the year and say, hey, we, and, you know, maybe like you said, it might only be three, four, or five homes, but I do think the first year or two, that would be a pretty good influx, I'd get an inquiry about once a week, and can I build them as, I'll get out front of them.
Yeah.
So I would think you could see a couple homes a year in a flag lot situation.
A lot of them, especially if they have like the lands tied up behind them, right, like there's a good, like, casing uses this one down here on the, we're just down from the city right here.
No, it's the.
It's like they have that whole parcel behind them, but the, yeah, just not.
If you catch five feet off of it, then.
Yeah, a lot of those ordinances too, ensured that like, they can never generate more than like one or two lots off it, so like, in some ways, it would really only be for people who, you know, not development purposes, because, and, and a lot of them remember, like, you gotta have fifty percent of the base zone or something.
Yeah, it was like more than like the acres is used to.
So then all of a sudden, it's like, you know, they're bigger lots than anyways than anywhere else, and no one's ever gonna do it, and I was genuinely, I wanna live there and I wanna, you know,
Yeah.
I just wanna build a home for, so I think they're a good thing, as long as we can be safe about doing them.
I think grouping those two together would probably be a good idea.
Yeah, I can look through the strategies, it's, and have that ready when we meet.
As far as for that, I guess, yeah, send a overview of what strategies are available, so we can maybe start brainstorming how we can meet those requirements.
Okay.
Felt like a lot of Ryan's questions with a good crafted ordinance, I felt like you could get around the issues that.
Most of them.
Most of them, like, as far as addressing both Jared's concern and the concerns that Ryan had on the city council side, I feel like, that could be addressed.
Did you guys wanna see what the city council will be working on from your ordinance? And then I'll send an email, that way you can give me your feedback, it might be.
Yeah, give me that.
Feedback and I'll definitely relay, it might be a little late to like formalize it, so if I miss something, bear it with me, but I'm sure it's talked about, so that they don't make anything that was not intended, but, uh, this was the simplest thing in our ordinance. I'm pretty sure I got it right. So our A D Us don't communicate fast, you know. So here's our allowed uses, size, R one through R three, we recommended changing R one, or, uh, R two to be able to go up to twenty-five hundred, R three to be able to go up to three thousand, R one to go to five thousand, anything above five thousand, it's a conditional use permit. That would change, those changes would, if they were accepted, that's how they'd be reflected, uh, so then I just went through and done all our ordinances, we don't have a ton, to be honest, that talk about accessory structures. I'll also just figure out, you know, just for discussion sake, I'll show them, I'll make sure they know we aren't just doing these things just to fund or just to train, push the envelope, I'll show them.
The stats or whatever.
Yeah, I send them a little bit of data, it's not perfect and it's not super robust, but it is what we have, so.
Yeah.
Kinda show them why the discussion got brought up and what we're, why we're even talking about it.
Well, I, I think it's important, especially the A D U portion of it, talked about, you know, when we were talking about affordable housing plans and stuff like that, to just kinda give people a lot more options.
For sure. And this is the last one, these would be the actual changes in ordinance that would get discussed a little bit. If I'm hijacking your time, Jase, we don't need to do this.
I think we're, I, I think we're done with what we have on the agenda today.
Okay, well, if you have anything you wanna preference over this, then this is important, so. Ah, what did you say, oh, come on, where is that? Accessory structure, it's weird, I had my PDF.
It's up top, ain't it, I don't know, that's YouTube and.
I'm lost, dude. Alright, so here's our current ordinance for accessory, uh, internal, uh, attached, a lot of people call them A D Us. Like you guys said just earlier, I don't think we touched them, other than I added this, just because if we're gonna get more friendly on these and everything I just added, each principal dwelling unit can qualify for one secondary attached unit, believe that was the discussion, one secondary attached, one secondary detached. So that would really be the only update to this, otherwise we're not really monitoring size, we, other than we're, and we're, but, and the only thing we're modern is that it's owned or occupied one of the units, so that's pretty much it. Secondary detached is the only one that I had to change, this got wordy, but bear with me. A dwelling unit for, so these are the changes, a dwelling unit for one family that shares a lot or parcel with the principal dwelling, here's the changes here. Each principal dwelling can qualify for one secondary detached unit, so they're exclusive, each can be one, right? That was the intent, I believe they could have one of each up to, if you'd like. The secondary unit's living area, exclusive garage, covered porch or patio, which is a power existing ordinance, this is a minimum of a four hundred, which is all existing, but then this is where it gets a little hard, cause we are, it's, anyway, I just put, and a maximum of fifty percent of the square footage identified as an allowed use for the accessory structure, table ten or, and this part is, I have a discussion with the city council, we can talk about it a little bit, and then I say, or fifty percent of the accessory building's square footage permitted through a conditional use permit, meaning they could go fifty percent of up to five thousand, three thousand, you know what I mean? Or if you guys were to grant a conditional use permit, it could follow, that's how I got you guys in the tent, I'm not sure.
So if we, if we granted, let's say, a ten thousand square foot, it could be five thousand.
Yeah, you probably remember our discussion, said, hey, someone could come do it and everyone seemed okay with that, I'm not, I wanna discuss that with the city council, I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm not saying it's right, but I think they should definitely be aware, hey, there is a cap, or there's no cap on that, like, it could take it pretty far, so I have that as a note to discuss with them later.
But also restricted by the impervious surface.
It would restrict impervious surface, yeah, we could only go sixty-five percent impervious surface, at some point it would get capped, but anyway. Uh, then this is another ordinance that references, it's just, that was the literal definition, this one's just a secondary ordinance found throughout code that is talking about requirements, I just included the same definition for maximum instead. And then here, I did, this would be good for me to clarify, I, we talked about parking, but it was like the last two minutes of the meeting, we just kind of, oh yeah, parking would be good. It looks like currently we require one per dwelling, I think we said two per dwelling. I don't know if we're hung up on that or not, we haven't done time with that, but I, I wanted to talk with them about parking, you said we're gonna increase size, do we wanna?
Two parking spaces per.
Yeah, I think that's what we had discussed, so I'm gonna kinda mention that to them, but two parking spaces per, and attached or detached. I don't think that would be rigid, especially if we were like flexible with like, you know, we could kinda at staff discretion of like, okay, identify your parking in the site plan, okay, these two are for us, these two are for, and if they're off-street, we're like, that seems reasonable, we could work with you. I don't, but, yeah, I do, I do think, you know, if they had only had two spots and they had two cars, you know, and then we could require an extra, but. What do you guys think, done the parking, how do you wanna, we don't do a lot with that.
I don't really touch it now.
I mean, I got a neighbor that puts six cars into their driveway and don't use their garage.
Yeah.
You know, so, oh, they use it, but it's not for cars.
Well, yeah, she, she raises goats, that's.
Oh, wow.
You guys have probably seen.
Puts diapers on them and puts them in her house.
You've probably seen some detached structures or even attached ones that are full functioning A D Us that'll have like a little cement pad on the rear or something, you know what I mean, that, you've probably seen that in practice, I'm not saying we need to do that, but, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if we wanna require four parking stalls though, if you've got.
Yeah, it looks like we require one for a dwelling.
So, leave it, one per dwelling.
So, anyone who does, when you need one, at least, and then we require one.
So then you would have so for, for another. Detached, you would need two total parking stalls.
Yeah.
I think that's reasonable.
I think it's reasonable to allow the cities, to staff, to have them come in and say, well, this is where we're gonna park, and if it's reasonable, I think, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll talk about.
On the curb in front of my neighbor's house.
These are the only discussions, and you guys can give me five minutes feedback on it, but I wanted to talk with them, just in my, from staff and talking to them, wondering, should there be an increase in the required number of automobile space, just like you said, if we're gonna increase size? Should we allow for detached accessory dwelling units, living space to increase with the issues of an oversight structure permit? Or should we maybe allow oversight structures to grow, but. Maybe allow oversized structures to grow, but, you know, we cap ADUs, which would still be big ADUs, I don't know, up to them, I suppose, and with your recommendation. With an increase in accessory structure size, should we consider an additional impervious surface restriction specifically for rear yards? I see that in other, uh, cities, a lot of them, you know what I mean, so that you don't end up with like a cement backyard, and that, you get what I mean? That way you don't have a ton of water flow off of just one side of your lot, it's like, yeah, well technically you're sixty-five percent, but your entire rear yard is now. Covered almost, and your front isn't that much, but now your neighbor gets, you know, a ton of flow from.
But you're not supposed to give it to your neighbor, because we have in our ordinance that you have to take care of your own runoff, right?
Should, I guess one would be allowed.
So does it matter if they wanna rock their whole, or cement their whole backyard?
Other than the natural effect that it'll flow, not on theirs, I suppose, but, I don't know. Anyway, I've seen other cities include rear yard specific ones, where it's like, okay, you're sixty-five total, thirty rear, something like that, that we have that extra level of like, hey, your backyard getting out of whack, but. And then I was wondering, and this one's a question I think you guys got with, should we increase the, I, I think this one's probably important, should we increase the allowed size in R three for accessory structure? I know Amanda specifically said, probably don't do it, and I agree with her, they're small, and I don't think I've ever seen an accessory structure come through there. But they're not small relative to other towns, and when we change this, there could be some si- some issues with. They could no longer get a ninety-six, a nine-hundred-and-sixty square foot ADU, which they could now technically, because, well, unless I really got. Nine-hundred-and-sixty for R three, you know what I mean, because we'll be limiting them to fifty percent of twelve hundred or.
It was seven, six hundred, yeah.
Six hundred.
Yeah, so they can only get a six hundred, and that would almost essentially make ADUs in R threes not doable, or. You know, we get complaints about nine-sixty, I think six hundred would be, so, I don't know if increasing the.
Put the R three, or just increase that instead of fifty percent, do like what it currently, the current ADU s- says, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they could do what the current ADU says, sure, um, I think that could get wordy and trying to like, you know what I mean, make sure that's.
Clear.
Clear, could get a touch wordy, like nine-sixty for R three with it, but, which is fine, I don't care if we get wordy, as long as we understand, the other option would be. Oh, man, I've seen this mountain, man, I don't know what that is up there. I don't know, all systems failure. And, unloaded. Hmm, oh, there, there you go, R three could go up to, for instance, eighteen hundred, or, yeah, like eighteen hundred, I suppose, and then they could accomplish their nine hundred still, or we could get technical and be like. Or two, you know what I mean, two thousand. I don't think a third, I guess.
R three is what, a third?
Yeah, one-third.
So it only.
Yeah, what is a third, is that a fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand?
Yeah, so they're a little, but, I'm not sure proportionately that a two thousand square foot. Two thousand out of fifteen thousand is thirty percent, right? And then, uh, an R one would be five thousand out of forty thousand is. Like twenty-five percent? So I'm not sure that, you get what I mean, I'm not sure it's completely out of lack of what we did anyways, so.
Yeah.
Percentage wise. What do you think?
What would happen if you leave it, the R three the way it is, twelve hundred or less?
Nothing, nothing, but just the way the ordinance is, is written, it would just say cap it at six, the ADU at six hundred feet instead of the nine-sixty.
Ain't nobody that's gonna build a six hundred square foot ADU.
No, so then it brings in the question, could anyone ever come in and say, that ordinance change? Could they get a variance, and you know, invite it, meaning you, you took away a, a property, right, but. I think you could change it, but you're granting the same one upgraded everyone else, and only that zone got, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Could be, I mean, if we have Brandon here, he could tell us, just feels a little sticky maybe, uh, I'm not sure it is, it could be totally fine, but it feels sticky, everyone else got an increase.
Do we know what the smallest ADU is that we've built? Is there anybody that's built right at that smallest limit?
Nine-hundred and sixty?
Yeah.
Um, Mendrick did, Casey Mendrick.
Well.
His plan said he did.
It was nine-sixty, and what's the maximum currently, twelve, it goes to?
Four hundred their minimum.
Four hundred, oh, nine hundred max.
So has anybody, has anybody ever built that?
Yeah, me, me and my wife and three kids living one out here.
Sweet.
I'm just wanting to get so bad for me.
I, I don't remember ever proving anything under nine-hundred and sixty.
Yeah, four hundred would be.
Yeah, so I don't know if that would be, I do, yeah, I. Could we, could we let them, like on a, on an R three, could we let them do seventy-five percent? Instead of fifty percent?
Yeah, it would be.
Cause that'd be nine hundred.
That'd be close, yeah.
Would that be?
As long as we allow them, let's say, to put the utilities, the furnace and the hot water heater and all that, it doesn't count.
I suppose, now that I'm kinda talking out loud, would it fix it if in the ordinance, we just changed the minimum to nine-sixty?
Minimum to nine-sixty?
Talking out, yeah, cause then no one could ever build less than nine-sixty, so it implied that R three has to be nine-sixty or above.
Yeah.
And then, maximum is fifty percent, so then it's essentially just taking the si- taking the floor, giving us a new floor, and then just raising the ceiling for everyone, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea too.
That's not a bad, that's not a bad idea.
Well, because like you said, it's almost, it'd be comical to leave it at four hundred, right, I mean. It's not, and no one's ever gonna touch it.
Do you know what's crazy, like, I got a crazy niece that basically lives in something about that size in Hawaii, I can totally see her doing it, but.
Yeah, I guess, I, I guess you do potentially rule out a few people, like, I can only do a, you know.
But it's such a small.
Yeah, I can't say I've ever, not seen a lot of complaints about, you know, or issues about.
People that are living in fifth wheels right now are trailers, they're doing it.
Well, somebody asked that at the last council meeting, or the last planning commission, I think Sean asked that, Sean or Ray. And I couldn't find anything in our ordinance about it, I looked for about seven minutes, but, to see if you can legally do that, I know like Plain City, it's illegal.
We don't, we don't have any ordinance, we don't have any ordinance against it.
Is it in the Hoover County?
I don't know.
County has something, but I don't think they can enforce it, um, if that makes sense.
Cause there was a complaint, this was probably two years ago, about that, and they.
They spoke south of forty-seven hundred, uh, they were looking at that.
Did they trick, did they do anything?
Yeah, they told them they had to.
Oh, they can't do, oh, really? Iris came out, were you there, Jamie? Seems like correct me if I'm wrong, but Iris kind of, in chastity, but highly recommended we put some, well, her partner did Matt, said you need to put some in for trailers. They seemed like they felt limited with their ability to, like, they will go out and tell them that at some point, you know, we have, we have an ordinance to back it. But that's what I kept away.
They're gonna say pretty please.
Yeah, they can just say pretty please. Is that how you want to shit it? So we probably, it'd probably be a good one to work on.
Hey, I think about my first apartment.
No bathroom facility.
I'm fine with seventy-five percent.
Yeah, on the R three?
Yeah, on R three, or the.
Or stay at nine-sixty?
Or the middle of nine-sixty, I guess I, if somebody wanted to build, I don't know why we would restrict somebody to, if they wanted to.
The tiny, tiny home.
Cause that, yeah, how big are them tiny homes?
Yeah, some of those are really.
Well, yeah, you can get tough shit and build you something that big, or small.
Yeah, I guess.
Seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good idea. I'll tell them that's kind of the idea, is that you could go about nine, try and.
I'd like to live in a hotel room, please.
Alright, well, if that, I'll email that out, but if I accomplish what you guys discussed, it'll be on their next meeting, so, don't worry about it, I think it does.
Yeah, that's right.
Looks better when you cleaned it all up like that, I chicken scratch for notes, you know, so that looks good.
Yeah, you gotta make it real legible for the city council, it's hard. Gotta make, just kidding, no, they're great, bunch of old doves that can't read.
Google Translate for them.
Yeah, no, we'll get your hammered out.
Alright, last, Travis, do you wanna do the pledge?
Sure.
Let me pledge. I'll say the prayer.
Talked anymore about our fee schedule, I know they did a little bit on, like rentals and stuff, but I thought some of our. Discussion was for like our fines and our.
They, they, they hit it at the last city council meeting.
For like fines?
No, well, it like, it was kind of an all-inclusive, they didn't really talk about much, honestly, they brought up fees and we still need to look at it, they just keep kicking the can down.
They told, they asked Morgan, well, Cherry, Cherry had Morgan do a, all of us took our section and. Provided a recommendation to increase or remain for each section, all the way for fines too, and Morgan compiled it all, and it's on their next meeting.
Okay, cause the only thing I heard, cause Mike was terrible, was about like the rentals for the.
For the park and stuff like that.
Park, and the boweries, and if you're a resident versus non-resident.
As far as the fines go, I think they could, as long as they're not fining on, on the first notice, like, I think, go ahead and make your fines whatever you want on the. Second and third or whatever, I guess that's how I feel, just.
Yeah, because the way they're written now is, that, like that, uh. The landscape did.
The greenhouse thing at Larkin.
You know, he got told to stop, he didn't, I know he had a bunch of excuses, but in fact, in my mind, I'm thinking. He just kept going, cause it was gonna cost him fifty bucks, big deal, I, I'd just keep going.
Yeah, when, when, uh, when Iris came, she specifically said that one, she said, you guys' fines for ordinance violations are one, or, you know, one singular, it was one fine, she said, like Far West had the same thing with their daily. Right, so instead of fifty bucks, it's fifty a day, to your point, it makes it more, you know, urgent and more.
Well, you gotta, you know, you gotta make it so that they actually take it serious and will get whatever fixed.
Yeah, I think Morgan, I, I think that's actually, I would imagine Morgan updated that, so, I think, I think that that will be on their review.
Alright.
I think I'll.
I'd like to welcome you out, Jared, it's fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five planning commission meeting, I'm Commissioner McCorick. And we'll start our meeting by having a Commissioner Bates leave us in a pledge, and I will give a prayer. You repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have to gather together as citizens of our, of Hooker, that we may discuss the needs of the city. As that thy Spirit may be with us, that may be guided and directed and make decisions according to the truths that we know. We're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy, yes, and please bless the soldiers that serve and protect us, and bless their families, that they may be comforted as their. Members of their families are away from them, we're grateful for everything that thou has given us, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Alright, first thing on the. Agenda is the approval of the minutes dated July tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, Commissioner Prince sent an email with, uh, informations about discussing. Internal ADUs and external ADUs and that portion, and we did not discuss restricting. The internal ADUs, just the outer ADU buildings that can be noted, so, if we could have that change, any changes other than that. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes dated July tenth, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to reapprove the minutes for July tenth, twenty-twenty-five, with the changes mentioned with the accessory dwelling units, both internal and external.
About a second.
Say it.
We have a motion from Commissioner Severing and a second from Commissioner Greener, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now on to the first item on our agenda, which is a conditional use permit for Sam Howard. For an oversized structure totaling eighteen hundred square feet, located at fifty-nine, ten, south, sixty-three hundred west. We'll first turn some time over to staff to give some information on this portion, this request.
We got a site plan listed here, eighteen hundred square foot, two hundred square feet larger than the permitted size for the R two zone, height's not a problem. Um, you can see the usage is just hobby wood, shop and storage, plumbing yes, electricity yes, uh, structure won't be used for business, um. There we go, we had a brief discussion about it, um, in the work meeting, but you can see the structure here in the rear. Um, it meets setbacks, um, everywhere except for the rear, um, setback is set at five foot, um, on the site plan. And, uh, would need to be ten foot because of a public utility easement, so just wanted to note that, um. The applicant made us aware of that, and is currently working on going through, uh, easement, vaca- vacating and easement process with the city. Um, the staff wasn't familiar, me primarily, with the process, I'd familiarized myself with it somewhat today, so I wanted to make sure we were aware that there would be a, uh, an application fee. Uh, likely a public hearing, that's what we've done in the past, um, that being said, this was a staff error, uh, and. The staff, including, you know, public workers, they're really comfortable with the approval of the conditional use permit, with, you know, granted one of two, two conditions, one of two conditions be met. One or the other, one being they move it five foot from the rear, and they're out of the easement, and we'll process it, or they go through the city prescribed process. That will administer to get the easement removed, so again, not ideal, next time we'll make sure we bring it to you guys, either ready to go, or we can. I, I don't think it will be problematic, it's really just some extra work for staff, which, like you said, with that being our error, we're happy to. Ensure the conditional use permit is, the conditions placed for met, so our recommendation would be to approve with the two condition, one of the two conditions being met, prior to the issuance of the permits. Any questions for staff, and we believe applicants here as well, so if you have questions for me, let me know.
How many of these did you find when you went back and looked, you said you found a folder? How many did you find where people had to get a vacated easement, I know of one.
Yeah, I didn't go through all of them, um, as I mentioned, and it's unfortunate, I wish, well, we gave, I think the last one we processed was in twenty-nineteen for Bob Edwards. Uh, looked like, and there was just one, I would assume it's one or two a year, and we had a record from about two thousand and seven to twenty-nineteen, and that, I think we had our, since the staff shifted up and things of that nature, so I don't think it's been. Either we haven't had people doing it, or it hasn't been getting recorded in the city, but we'll make sure it gets back to the same process. Actually, I have Brandon looking into it to see if the public hearing is a state requirement, but if it is, we'll continue, if it's not, I'm not sure. You know, it, we'll talk with you guys in city council if we wanna modify our process at all, but, we'll, uh, we'll make sure the process is followed.
So, you had stated that they wanted to do the five foot easement behind the building, but it shows up on the side as well, is it, so both lines?
The side is okay, there's no public utility on the, uh, some south side, that's clear, so they can go up to five.
Okay. That makes sense, okay. Are there actual utilities there, cause sometimes there's easements, there's nothing there.
I don't think there's anything there, but I, uh, they've gone through, I think they've provided, I'd have to look, but the water, both water companies, I don't have anything. Uh, I think even Dominion doesn't have anything, I think we're just waiting on Rocky Mountain, but they take a long time, and then, uh, Jared's been slammed with tomato days, he blinked on it. Said, I don't think so, but I'll need to get more robust, you know, sit down and ensure, but, it doesn't look like it right now.
So if there's no, no utilities in that, then. The condition, if we approve on the condition that they get the vacation. We give him his money back, could you say he would take a new fee?
There will be a fee to public hear it, because I think, at least in the process prescribed, you know, there runs Brandon writes and ordinance to remove the easement. I don't know what that means, I emailed Brandon specifically, cause he's been around since twenty-nineteen, he said, hey, what have we do in the past, so we'll make sure it's followed, and Brandon. Even though he's preoccupied now, he'll still generally get back to me in a few days with small stuff like that, so. I, I, it'd be a new fee, but didn't get charged already, but we would, you know, go through the process, I think it's two. I, I, it'd be a new fee that didn't get charged already, but we would, you know, go through the process, I think it's two fifty, two hundred or two fifty, the fee, so it's nominal, but not, not nothing.
Any other questions for staff? If the applicant is here, they could come up, and we could ask some questions, or does staff have questions to ask?
You can flip the switch on the mic there, they'll be able to laugh.
Then you can just state your name, you don't need to state your address, but.
Okay, yeah, Sam Howard.
Anybody have any question?
In light of the new condition, let's say, is it possible to, I mean, I'm in favor of regardless. Putting, or approving it on conditions, but is it, is there any way you can pull it five feet closer to the. Back of the house, or cut five feet off, and then nobody has to say anything, you know what I mean?
Oh, you mean, oh, move it, uh, make it ten feet instead of five?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be a no-brainer if you said, you know what, instead of doing it, how deep is it?
Uh, so it's thirty by sixty?
So if you did it thirty by fifty-five, it'd be, there would be no reason to have your additional two hundred and fifty. Application fee, and then have to go to Rocky Mountain and say.
Yeah, well, we'd probably just rather move it instead, cause we've already got the engineer drawings done, and like a, like a contract locked.
So you could move it to sixteen feet off the house, right?
Yeah, yeah, if we had to.
Well, that's up to you, because I think, in talking in our work meeting, I think we were all for this, other than. If you wanna keep it as it is right now, then you would have to get a, uh, vacated easement, because it's within the ten foot easement, if you will. But if you moved it or cut five feet off of it, then that becomes null and void, uh, just a thought.
Okay, is that something we would need to decide right now in order to get the permit?
Nope, we're just asking.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, 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 we could definitely move it if it came to that, that wouldn't be a problem. As long as it doesn't cause other problems with other distances and stuff, but.
There wasn't ten feet between buildings, so you should be fine.
Okay, then yeah, yeah, that'd be, that'd be fine.
To me, it's making sure you have, even if, maybe you don't get the vacated thing, if you have another space to navigate, that sounds like you do, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other question? Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Well now, in our public hearing for the conditional use permit for Sam Howard for oversized structure totaling eighteen hundred square feet, located at fifty-nine, ten, south, sixty-three hundred west. Uh, during the public hearing, if you could come forward and just state your name, and then you have three minutes, once your three minutes is up, then you can sit down. Well, in the public hearing now, anybody have any comments? All right, we'll now close that public hearing, and bring it back to the planning commission for discussion and motion. Now, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for Sam Howard at fifty-nine, ten, south, sixty-three hundred west. On the condition that if he stays over the public utility easement, he gets vacated easement letters from all entities. Or he moves a building or shortens a building, that, what we talked about.
He shortens the building or moves a building to follow them, I think, or is it plans?
We have a motion from Commissioner Severing for the conditional use permit for Sam Howard. For oversized structure, eighteen hundred square feet, located at fifty-nine, ten, south, sixty-three hundred west, on the condition that he meets the. Either moves a building or meets the requirements set forth by the city staff. Do we have a second?
We'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Widdson, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. We now will move into our final agenda item, which is the final approval of the Swayze subdivision located at the, that partial zero eight, zero four two, zero zero seven five for Braden Swayze. I'll turn some time over to staff for a presentation.
Looks like when they created the PowerPoint, they just included the plat, that's fine, you should have in your packet a utility plan, do you guys wanna reference the utility plan, that'd be the only discussion point, but. Just briefly, we have a memo from the TRC that's done, their reviews of this, um, this is to create a, a one lot subdivision, or a one point eight one acre lot subdivision, the city's R one zone. Um, this building's located, the proposed home will be at approximately five seven three three west, thirty-eight hundred south, Hooper, Utah. Um, through the review process, everything met, the TRC is recommending approval, uh, the frontages would not be deferred, that'd probably be a note to make. Um, just as we do a long time to get it for this one, but it's right up to an existing, um, subdivision, a sidewalk, so he just continued sidewalk on his frontage, and that's all in the drawn plans. Additionally, there will be a land use separation fence, there'll be a small fence removed, it looks like on the west side, and a, a standard land separation fence placed between there. Beyond those two typical considerations those are in, uh, I just wanted to highlight to the planning commission to ensure that, you know, the TRC operates within you guys' purview as well, that. Uh, between last time, this was public heard with, uh, Kim, no, public heard with, uh. Kimball Estates, I believe, so there's a public hearing, no comments, but with discussion with the applicant, there was confusion on the fact that there'd be little to no room for. Modification of, uh, utility lines, the, from the plat, so he made small modifications. Uh, that were then recycled back through for one final, not an official review, but just a, you know, some communication problem, so we, we processed it back with the utility companies, and they're good with the changes. Back with our engineering, back with public works, changing our problems, specifically the sewer was moved, the water line, both water lines removed, and the approach removed further, or over to the, uh. East side of the lock being proposed, that's where the home would like to be located, and really just boiled down to that, and say, well, I didn't, I didn't know exactly where I was gonna place my home, so he put some extra effort in. To determine where the home would go, and move the utility lens, so with all that being said, the staff recommends approval, uh, along with the TRC for the Swayze subdivision.
Thank you, staff, is there a representative of the applicant that could come forward and answer any questions that the commission might have?
Here, bring Swayze.
From my view, it looks pretty straightforward, you got everything checked off, if anybody else? Have any questions? Great. All right. Now, bring it, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Swayze subdivision located at parcel zero eight, zero four two, zero zero seven five for Braden Swayze.
You did say that he's gonna install, he's gonna continue curb clutter inside my guy, cause he butts up to a whole new subdivision.
Yes.
As part of his approval.
Yeah.
Yes, so there is a land use separation fence that's going?
Yeah, they think on the plan there, you show, it calls out removing an existing smaller one on the west and installing the, an adequate one, so that way it worked out with the construction.
And all will serve letters are in?
All final will serve letters are in from everyone that's super significant, yeah, all the water, irrigation, water, um, power, sewer. Um, sometimes like with gas and power, you know, tricky, they're so large, they don't really care, but we do our best to get some type of notice, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we issue final approval for the Swayze subdivision, located at parcel zero eight dash zero four two dash zero zero seven five for Mr. Braden Swayze.
Motion from Commissioner Bates, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Greener, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, at this time, we'll now open the meeting to citizen comment, as you come up to state your comment, please just keep your comments to three minutes. And note that, um, we cannot take any action on your comments at this meeting. Do we have any citizen comment? No citizen, citizen comment, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
A motion from Commissioner Widdson to adjourn, uh, second. Second from Commissioner Greener, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.